Amen, Praise the Lord. We can all be here. And yes, we do indeed need to be well-equipped and putting on the armor of God, because we are in a spiritual battle. You know, the thing with spiritual things is that you don't see it, but you definitely see the effects of it. And many people don't realize that they only have this idea that we are living in this, this is the only world that we are in. This is the world that you can see and touch, right? You can, all your senses can, it's visible. But people don't realize that there's actually another, there's another realm or reality behind all this, and it's spiritual. And it certainly is. When you are a Christian, when you really follow Christ, you can see indeed there's definitely a struggle between the two. And that God's enemy is very real, very, very real. So, you know, I find it very amazing that people don't believe in God and don't believe in spiritual things. But, you know, we're not, they may think we're stupid, foolish, but, you know, actually, it's the wiser way. You know, here, I'll, I have some slides here. We won't go, we have two meetings today. We have this afternoon that we started at four, and then after dinner, we have another one. We'll continue with the rest. But, you know, here we, I tell everybody that God has a plan. And this is sometimes, I think, even for many Christians, that we overlook this. Many times, we only care about our own life, because that's what's right in front of us. It's immediate. And, you know, the, all the concerns of our life are right in front of us. And that's what we think about. There's a verse that I was thinking of in Philippians, chapter 2. Philippians, chapter 2, verse 21. And this is definitely a problem, isn't it? Philippians 2:21, I'll read it for you. It says, "For all seek their own, not the things which are of Christ Jesus." Isn't that the problem? Everybody just seeks for their own things. They don't care about what the Lord wants. They just want to receive from the Lord, but they don't think about what the Lord wants from us, you know? And this is why we really need to broaden our view, our scope, to understand that there is indeed a plan. And one important thing to note here that I've written in the, in my slides is that God does not change His plans. Some people think that the God of the Old Testament and the God of the New Testament are different. It's a different God. You know, God was cruel and mean in the Old Testament, and in the New Testament, He's very loving and forgiving and all that. But no, He's the same God. He hasn't changed. And His plan actually has not changed. And His plan, as you read in the Bible, I hope all of you have had a chance to read the Bible. You know, this is a very important book. You will not know about God's plan if you don't read this book, okay? You can hear about it from people. Like, I can share it with you today. You can hear about it, you, you know, others can show you, but unless God shows you Himself, you will not understand it. You know, it'll just be some knowledge in your head, but it won't be like, wow, this is, I get it. You know, you won't be like, it won't be a revelation to you. And you won't realize how important this is, right? If you just, if I just tell you about it, you'll say, yeah, yeah, makes sense, okay, good. But it's not until you actually get into the Word and you seek the Lord for revelation. You ask Him, "Show me your kingdom. Show me what you mean." Then you won't really understand it. Because if you don't really see it, as soon as somebody comes along with a different teaching that sounds better, you'll immediately just, you know, you'll just get confused and lose it, right? So, we can see here when we read the Bible, and we can see some verses here, that God's plan is to establish a kingdom of righteousness over the whole earth. And what is a kingdom? It's really to, a kingdom is basically, it's like a government. It's like a country. You know, like, you could say in some way that, well, a kingdom is a, is a type of government that is ruled by a king. You know, under a government here in Canada, right? And I'm, and I know some of the people on Zoom, they're from various countries. Every country has a government, right? And you make up, when you live, when you're a citizen, for us, we're citizens of Canada, so we belong to the quote-unquote "kingdom" of Canada. We actually, in a way, we are, our head of state is actually a king, right? We do have a king, King Charles. Whether you like him or not, that's another story. But we do have a king, right? So, and like, if you live in the U.S., you're a citizen of the U.S., you are, your ruler is President Biden, supposedly, okay? We assume he's the one ruling. But anyways, so, but God wants to establish His kingdom. Okay? And the kingdom is not just in a small place. He wants to rule over the whole earth. Because one thing you notice about any, as you get older and you, you know, you've been around and you, you read more about what's happening in the world, you realize no country is perfect. Every country in this world is ruled by man. And what's one characteristic of man that is common everywhere? They're fallen, but what does that mean? They're corrupt, they have sin, right? The root of the problem is that they all have sin, right? Yes, they're fallen and corrupted, but the root of it is sin. And they all have sin. Eventually, everybody who wants to get involved in politics or something, they, many times, they have good intentions, right? They want to make the country better. Make, make the country great again, right? Whatever it is, right? They all want to do that. But then eventually, when they get in, they're tempted by money and power. And there's so many corrupt things inside, right? They're, everything goes wrong many times, right? Because it is just a government of man. It just doesn't work. And, you know, there is no real righteousness, right? Maybe here in Canada, we live in relative peace, but there, you can tell, there's a lot of unrighteousness everywhere, right? A lot of things that are very much against God, even though they're not illegal, but it's everywhere, right? It's all over in, in, in Canada or in, and all over the world. So, God's kingdom is a very different kingdom, because He's the one that's ruling it. And there is nobody righteous other than God. There is nobody perfect other than God. Everybody has a different idea of good, right? If you say that you want to live in a place that is, you know, everything is good, right? Well, what is your idea of what is good? What is, what do you think is good, right? But you put two people together, they both have different idea of what is good. And those different ideas, everybody, no, most people are not out to cause problems, okay? There are people that are out to cause problems, but most people, most reasonable people are living somewhere to, you know, to make things better, make society better. They want to contribute to society. But every, the problem is, everybody has their own definition of what is right. And that is governed by their, it could be from their upbringing, it could be, you know, it's just from their own humanity. It's from their own human nature. But God's, but God's righteousness and what He views as right is what is truly right. It's not what we think is right, okay? So, if you can look at Daniel, chapter 2, for example, there's a very amazing prophecy. This was prophesied a long time ago by the prophet Daniel. Actually, it was given as a dream first to the king of Babylon, but Daniel interpreted it. And in this dream, I won't go through the whole thing, but it says, "In the days of these kings," verse 44, chapter 2, verse 44. It says, "The God of heaven will set up a kingdom which shall never be destroyed. And the kingdom shall not be left to other people, and it shall break in pieces and consume all these kingdoms, and it shall stand forever. And this kingdom also will fill the whole earth." This is a kingdom that will stand forever and will never be destroyed. And it's set up by who? By the God of heaven. He Himself was set it up, you know? So, you know, it will, there is no fault. It will never be defeated, right? And this is what God wants to do. And even every other kingdom, meaning every other government, everything will be destroyed, will be wiped out. So, here in Canada, you know, the government, they can be voted in, voted out, it doesn't matter. They will not last. One day, God's kingdom will come and wipe it out. Every kingdom on this earth, every government. And God will rule with us, hopefully. There's also Matthew, chapter 6, we know, right? In the Lord's Prayer about how the Lord taught His disciples to pray in verse 9 and 10. It says, "In this manner therefore pray: Our Father in heaven, hallowed be your name. Your kingdom come; your will be done on earth as it is in heaven." Just stop there. Yeah, "to your kingdom come." So, the Lord, even in, in teaching the disciples how to pray, the second thing that He mentions is to pray for the coming of God's kingdom, for His rule on the earth. And this is how His will will be done on earth. Right now, God's will is not being done on earth. Right now, the world is a mess. No matter where you go, it is a big mess, right? There is no, nothing is righteous. Nothing is right in God's eyes. Everything is just darkness and evil and sin everywhere, you know? Everywhere you go, it's like that. So, this is why the kingdom of God has to come back. And then, of course, there's Jeremiah, 23. Jeremiah 23, verse 5. "Behold, the days are coming," says the Lord, "that I will raise to David a branch of righteousness; a king shall reign and prosper and execute judgment and righteousness in the earth." Amen. Yeah, one day, this is what will happen. The king will come back. That's Jesus Christ. And He will execute, what does it say? "Execute judgment and righteousness in the earth." Yeah, this is what we look forward to. This has to be our hope. You know, when you see, when you read the news and you see all the terrible things happening, you know, yeah, it does feel kind of hopeless, but we have a hope that one day judgment will come and righteousness will be all over the earth. Right? That is what we are waiting for. And of course, there are more verses that you can look up. And what makes up this kingdom of God? A kingdom is not a kingdom unless first you need a king, but then you have, you need people, right? A kingdom is not a kingdom unless there are people. And that means that the people that make up this kingdom, they have to be holy. You cannot have a kingdom of righteousness if the people are unrighteous. You know, the people are all full of sin and evil and selfish and, and, you know, committing all types of terrible things. Then there's, what kind of kingdom is that? So, God wants all of the people that make up this kingdom to be righteous and holy. And they have to be in His image. And this is why, right from the beginning, when God created man, and we read this in the Young People's Meeting, Genesis, chapter 2, verse 7. Oh, sorry. That's not the one I was thinking of. Right from the beginning, it says that God wanted to make man, verse, chapter 1, verse 26, sorry. 1, verse 26, it said, "God said, 'Let us make man in our image, according to our likeness; let them have dominion over the fish of the sea, over the birds of the air, and over the cattle, over all the earth, and over every creeping thing that creeps on the earth.'" And verse 27. "So God created man in His own image; in the image of God He created him; male and female He created them." You see, He mentioned it twice here. "Let us make man in our image; and then let Him rule over all the creation." And then He mentions again in 27, "So God created man in His own image." And then the third time, "in the image of God He created him." Three times in two verses, He mentioned that God created man in His image. That doesn't, when I was a kid and I, and I read this, I thought, oh, that, that means that God must have two arms and two legs and, you know, so I, I look like God. You know, I was a kid, that's what I understood. But I, but as I got older, I began to realize that that's not what it means. There are a lot of, what it means to be in God's image is to take on, also to have His holiness, to be righteous like God, to be, to have His goodness, to have His love, to have His way of thinking, right? To be a, you know, if, if I, you know, if I am this way and my son, let's say James, is like me, then I would say he is an image of me, right? I may not, he's not exactly like me, but he is like me in some way, right? Then that is what God wants. Because they, man had a job to rule over and to take care of the entire earth, the entire creation. So, if man was like me, I would be selfish. I would be mismanaging things. I would be forgetful and lazy and I wouldn't do a good job, right? I would, if I was managing it, I would probably keep all the gold to myself, right? I would keep all the best of everything for myself. But that's not how, that's not how God made us. He didn't say God created man. For all the other creatures, it said that God formed them. But only for man does it say that He made man in His image. This is very significant, because man is supposed to be a reflection of God, an expression of God. God is invisible, He's a spirit. So, He made a physical form of, like Himself, to carry, to have His characteristics, to do His work on the earth, right? So, that's how the kingdom started. It's a whole, it's supposed to be a whole human race of people that are just like Him in nature. That's what it's supposed to be, right? And it would be so wonderful if it was like that, right? But God, of course, gave every man a choice, a free will. And you know the story, right? Adam and Eve, they disobeyed God. They made the wrong choice. So, but another significant point is in chapter 2, verse 7. "Not only are they in His image, but there's another very significant point here in chapter 2, verse 7. It says, "The Lord God formed man of the dust of the ground and breathed into his nostrils the breath of life; and man became a living being." You know, man wasn't just created in His image, but he was created to contain the spirit of God, right? The breath, this word, "breath of life", it's actually the same word as "spirit". So, God blew His spirit into this, He formed this, I guess, like a mud sculpture or something, right? And then He blew His spirit into it, and it became alive. There is no other creature that was formed like that. Nothing else had the breath of God in it. Only man did, right? So, we are, not only are we in His image, but we contain the breath of God or the spirit of God. So, we're supposed to be containers of God's life in us. That's what keeps us going. But because sin entered man, then this, then the spirit of man died, and man no longer became a container for God's spirit, and man became empty. And that's why people go all around searching, trying to fill the void, the gap that's in their heart. They're looking to so many things to try to make themselves happy and fulfilled, but they can't find anything, because the only thing that can fill us is the spirit of God, the breath of God, right? And this is why we need to be restored back into relationship with God. So, so this is, this is, it's very important to see what we were created for. We were created to rule over God's creation and to be a container of God's spirit, of the breath of life, and also to be an expression, a manifestation of God on this earth. So, imagine if a, if a kingdom was like that. Imagine if you're living in a country where every person is, is a, is an expression of God in human form, like so perfect, like God, you know, holy and righteous and full of life. And I think that would be the best place to live, right? That would really be a wonderful place to live. And that's what God intended the earth to be, okay? So, and it says this in Ephesians, chapter 4. Ephesians, sorry, Ephesians, chapter 1, verse 4 and 5. It says, "Just as He chose us in Him before the foundation of the world, that we should be holy and without blame before Him in love, having predestined us to adoption as sons by Jesus Christ to Himself, according to the good pleasure of His will." Yes, He chose us. God chose us in Christ before the foundation of the world. So, even before the world was created, God already chose us. And His plan was that we would be holy and without blame before Him in love, right? The love of God wants us to be holy and without blame. And we were destined, predestined, to be sons of God through Christ, right? So, this is really amazing, that God's intention, you know, so God didn't just create Adam and Eve, but He intended for them, they were actually His sons and daughters. They're His children. You know, He never called the cats and the dogs and the cows and the chickens His children. But to us, He wanted us to be His children, to be His family, to be sons, it says, to be sons of God. So, that's really, it shows you the closeness, the close relationship that God wants to have with us, yeah? Okay. And then, yeah, we talked about how mankind was to oversee His creation. So, let's go back to Genesis, chapter 1. Okay, we talked about how we were supposed to rule over everything, but we missed verse 28. Chapter 1, verse 28. So, it says, "Then God blessed them," that's Adam and Eve, "and God said to them, 'Be fruitful and multiply; fill the earth and subdue it; have dominion over the fish of the sea, over the birds of the air, and over every living thing that moves on the earth.'" Yeah, that's right. But it's, it's, we understand this, right? To have dominion over the fish of the sea, over the birds of the air, and over every living thing that moves on the earth. That means we have to, people were supposed to oversee God's creation, right? To take care of it. But what is this word, "subdue"? In verse 28, it says, "Fill the earth and subdue it." What does the word "subdue" mean? Yeah, to take over, right? To keep it under your control. And that word implies that it's gotten out of control. There's something in it that has gotten out of control, and you have to put it back under control. And we know what that is, right? Because soon after this, in chapter 3, we saw the appearance of the what? The serpent. So, and the serpent came around and messed everything up, right? And the serpent, as we know, is the devil, it's Satan. And so, God knew that not only do you have to oversee creation, but you also have to subdue the enemy of God. You have to put Him under your control. So, this is another aspect. So, the kingdom is not just about people, a holy people enjoying life and, and everything is happy, but a kingdom also many times involves warfare, right? There is always some kind of warfare involved. And in this case, it means we have to be victorious. The people have to overcome and be victorious against the enemy of God. And, and it was because of the enemy of God that man fell into sin. Sin entered, we read about it last night in the Young People's Meeting, that Satan, the serpent, tricked Eve to eat the, not the apple, but the fruit of the knowledge of good and evil. And she, she, he catered, he played to her desires to be wise. And the, the appearance of the fruit, it looked good. So, he, he, he went after that weakness in her, and she took it and she ate, and she gave it to her husband, who was with her. And sin went in. So, Satan won that first round, right? In the battle between God and Satan, Satan won that first round. But God knew that would happen already, right? God knew that would happen. But because of that, sin entered the entire human race, and creation fell under a curse. So, what does God want to do? Like I said, God is all-knowing. You cannot call yourself God if you did not know that this would happen. So, of course, God, who is not limited by time and space, He absolutely knew that this would happen. And so, God knew that man would sin and disobey Him. That's why, even before everything was created, He already prepared a Savior for us, and His name is Jesus Christ. And you can read about this in 1 Peter, chapter 1. 1 Peter, chapter 1, verse 20. It says, "He," that's Christ, "indeed was foreordained; He was already pre-planned before the foundation of the world, but was manifested in these last times for you; who through Him believe in God, who raised Him from the dead and gave Him glory, so that your faith and hope are in God." And earlier in verse 19, it says, it talked about the precious blood of Christ, "a lamb without blemish and without spot." This lamb, without blemish or spot, was already prepared, foreordained before the foundation of the world, prepared for you. prepared for you, prepared for us, so that when the sin came, and the time, the appropriate time came, the lamb would come and become our sacrifice, our sin offering. That lamb, Jesus Christ, would die on the cross to take our place. When we should have died, He died instead for us. So here, what did, what more did this lamb of God do? It says here in Colossians, chapter two. I really like these verses. It says in chapter two, verse 13 to 15. It says, "You being dead in your trespasses and the uncircumcision of your flesh, He has made alive together with Him, having forgiven you all your trespasses, having wiped out the handwriting of requirements that was against us, which was contrary to us, and has taken it out of the way, having nailed it to the cross; having disarmed principalities and powers, He made a public spectacle of them, triumphing over them in it." Amen. So we, we were at one point dead in our trespasses, in our sin. Sin makes you dead, spiritually dead. And that's exactly what happened to Adam and Eve. We saw that last night in chapter three. As soon as they ate the fruit, they started to hide themselves from God. It means that that connection to God, the relationship to God was already broken. And they were afraid of God seeing them naked. They were afraid, fear came in. And that is when sin came in, and they were dead. And that's how we used to be, we were dead. There was no connection to God anymore. We were supposed to contain the breath of life in us, but then we became empty, we were empty. And the uncircumcision of our flesh, meaning our flesh was the, was what was ruling over us. We were living by our flesh. Everything we did was controlled by what the flesh wanted to do. The flesh, meaning the old human nature. Your, your human nature, which is sinful, you do whatever your sinful nature does. And He has, but what did He, He do? He made us alive together with Him. He brought us back to life, right? And forgave us all of our trespasses. He forgave all of our sins, okay? Everything that we had done before, He forgave us. We start clean when we believe in Him. We are alive and we start clean, right? A new beginning. Having wiped out the handwriting of requirements that was against us, that means that we had a sentence, we were sentenced before. You know, if you commit a, let's say you go out and commit a crime, right? Let's say, I don't know what, you, you killed somebody, or you, I don't know what, robbed a bank, okay? And then you go to, you go to court. And when you go to the court and you stand in front of the judge, the judge will give you a sentence and say, "You have to go to jail for 10 years." That's your sentence, right? And that's exactly what we had. Because of our sin, we were sentenced. And what was our sentence? It was death. Not just spiritual death, but what, what kind of death? I didn't hear that. Eternal death, but everything, right? Body, soul, and spirit, everything had to die. It was burning in the lake of fire for eternity, right? Our whole body, imagine being thrown into this lake of fire, because, and that is the sentence that we have. Because God is holy, He cannot tolerate any sin. So now, because of our faith in Christ and, and being made alive, this sentence was wiped out. It was wiped clean, okay? And He took it out of the way, and He nailed it to the cross. And now, and not only that, but He disarmed the principalities and powers, meaning Satan. Satan became powerless, right? He, He had no power over us, and He put him to shame. He put Satan to shame. So this is really amazing, what the Lord has done, right? So that is the first step in restoring the kingdom of God. Remember, this is not just about you being saved from your sins. You have to look at the bigger picture. And the bigger picture is that God is doing this for His plan, so that He can have a kingdom. Remember, you cannot have a kingdom if there are no people. If all the people are dead, there's no kingdom. So the first step is you have to make them alive, and you have to make them holy, then you can have a kingdom, right? So you have to look at it from God's point of view. It's not just to save you. Of course it is, because He loves you. But He also wants to take over this whole earth again, out of the hands of the enemy. So, yeah, so here, the point, the third point is, "By faith in Christ and accepting His sacrifice for our sin, we are reconciled back to God, and we receive a new life." Adam failed, right? Adam failed. Adam and Eve, they both failed miserably. They, they were tricked. Actually, Eve was tricked. And Adam just followed along what his wife told him to do, right? He just ate the fruit. But Christ was victorious. And that is in First Corinthians, chapter 15. 15:21. Okay, 15:21. It says, "For since by man," that's Adam, "came death. Adam brought death; but by man, capital M, which is Christ, also came the resurrection of the dead." He brought us back from the dead. In verse 22, "For in Adam all die." And that's how we were. Before Christ, we were all in Adam, because every single human being descended from Adam. You did not descend from the apes, okay? You descended from Adam. God created Adam and Eve. They were created in His image to contain His life. But they sinned. But they can, they had many children. And then the children had children, and then so on and so on. And eventually, out came you and me, okay? And so in other words, the sin that was, that entered into Adam and Eve, it's like a, it's like a genetic defect. I don't know, it's not genetic, it's just spiritual. But it's like a genetic defect. It just got spread throughout, to everybody. Everybody got it, okay? But, so we were all in Adam, but in Christ, we shall all be made alive. Now, that's why we have to be born again. You were born the first time, but you were born from parents that also had this defect in them, this sin. So we have to be born again, but born of God. And if we're born of God, He doesn't have this defect in Him. He's holy. So this is why we need to be born again. So you are born now of a new life that has no sin, that's incapable of sin, right? So this is what we need. And this, this is what Christ accomplished. So this is a very well-known picture. Some of you have seen it before. This is how we used to be. I used to be here, and I was separated from God by my sin. There was a huge gap. I could never cross over. But because of Jesus and what He did, His death on the cross, now my connection to God is restored. That is the only way, right? He's the only way. It's a very simple diagram that helped me to believe when I was a kid. Actually, I saw this, there was a gospel tract in our, in our church group. And I picked it up, I looked at it, I thought, oh wow, this is, this totally makes sense. I want this. So I, I, I accepted the Lord from that. And I always remember this diagram. So here it is. Right, very simple. The best way, the only way. So now we have to be saved and transformed by the life of Christ, right? Now it's not just about being restored to God, but we have to be transformed, we have to be changed. Remember, the kingdom has, is composed of holy people. But as soon as I'm, I believe and I'm born again, I'm still a fleshly person. I may have the Spirit of life in me, but the rest of me is still very corrupted. So that's why I need to be saved and transformed by the life of Christ. And this life, and the reason why this happens is because it restores us back to our originally intended state. God has always intended for us to be a holy people, without any blemish. And what this does, what this transformation work does is to restore us, bring us back to that original state, so that we can carry out God's originally intended purpose. The transformation isn't just so that you can be good people. It's so that you are, can be useful to carry out the plan that He has for us, which is to rule over the earth. You see? There's, if you're just made a good person into His image, but you don't do anything, then that's, that defeats the point, right? That's not what it's about. We really have to see from God's point of view. And I'll say this over and over again throughout this, this fellowship. We are to rule over His creation in holiness and righteousness and subduing the enemy. So being saved is not enough. We must become holy and blameless and perfect, right? And that's in Colossians, chapter one. Verse 22. 1:21 and 22. "And you who once were alienated in enemies in your mind by wicked works, yet now He has reconciled in the body of His flesh through death, to present you holy and blameless and above reproach in His sight, if indeed you continue in the faith, grounded and steadfast, and not moved away from the hope of the gospel which you heard, which was preached to every creature under heaven, of which I, Paul, became a minister." Yeah. So it shows us that we have to continue. There is a continuation, we have to keep going. And there will be a lot of attacks, and there is a lot of opposition to try to make you stop, but you have to continue. Because the process to become perfect and holy is not easy, okay? But you can see here that that is what God has always wanted. And we know the verse in Romans 8:29, that we are to be conformed to the image of Christ, right? To be changed. So this is so important, right? There's a continuation. It's not just what, and this is why today, there's so much, what's the term? Today's term is misinformation, right? They like to say that. It's wrong information. That I'm just saved, I received Jesus, and that's it. But there is a progress, a progression. So I want to emphasize that just because you did not deny your faith, it doesn't mean you're safe, right? If we are not progressing, then we are moving backwards. There are a lot of Christians that will say, "Well, I'm not as bad as that person. I still believe in Jesus. I still go to church. I still read my Bible." But day after day, year after year, there is no change. Our love for the Lord isn't increasing. Our love for brothers and sisters is not increasing. Our love for the church is not increasing. We're still being overcome by sin and repeating the same sins all the time. We're still self-centered. We're still proud. So many things, where our mind and our heart is always on earthly things. But hey, I'm still a Christian, I still read the Bible, I still go to church. You have to realize, if we are not making progress, if we are not changing, then we are actually going backwards. Don't feel comfortable that you're okay, because you're, you know, you're still believing in Jesus. You have to realize that we, there is no other option. We must make progress, we must grow, we must be transformed. We must overcome our flesh and our sin and the death that's in us, right? Always, there's so many, in the, in the Bible, there are so many checks that, that, that the Lord gives us. And these checks are to check how you're progressing, right? Like for example, the fruit of the Spirit. We know, we should all be able to name the fruit of the Spirit, right? Love, joy, peace, long-suffering, kindness, goodness, faithfulness, gentleness, self-control, right? All the fruit of the Spirit. Love, joy, peace, patience, kindness, goodness, faithfulness, gentleness, self-control, yeah. Right, we should all know these. But these, do you see these being produced in you? Do you see it happening, right? So these are little checks that we, we should do, right? If you're, you know, if you're, let's say you're baking a cake. You know, some of you have baked cakes before. What do you do to check if it's ready? No, not the temperature. You don't bake cakes, right? Yeah, I can tell. What do you do? You put a toothpick in, and then you check to see if it's still wet inside, right? So even with baking, you, you check if it's done. You know, if you're making a steak, what do you do? Or you're cooking, baking a chicken or something, what do you do? You poke it to see if it's still bleeding. You, if you're, or other, for non-cooks out there, what are their examples? You know, if you're, if you're, if you're studying, right? You're, you're studying a course. What does the teacher give you? Tests. And when you get a test, if you, if you're doing badly at the test, what does it mean? It means you're not doing so well, you're not making very good progress, right? So there are so, in life, there are so many, even at work. What does the boss do sometimes? He gives you a performance review. Every year, in my job, I have to write a performance review, and then my boss talks about his, my performance with me. And if there's anything I need to improve or anything that I've done well, right? There's, there's so many ways to check your progress, but somehow in our Christian life, we, we don't care. How much do we check our progress? We like to look at other people's progress. Oh, David is, oh, he's not progressing. We look at others, but we don't look at ourselves, how our progress is, right? And so this, we have to, I think we don't take this seriously enough. Are we really growing? Is there anything changing in me? Do I care more for God's purpose, His church, His kingdom? You know, otherwise, it's not just about knowing the Bible more. Remember, the Pharisees knew the Bible so well. They knew the Bible better than anybody, but they completely missed Christ. They missed the Messiah. It's not about knowing the Bible. But, you know, I, I have a, a belief, a personal belief, which is that God, there are a lot of things that God will not reveal to us in the, in the Word of God until we're ready. The things, and the reason is because the things that we do know, He wants us to, to work out in our life. And the reason why He hasn't revealed more many times is because the simple things we don't do. So how can He reveal the more complicated things to us, right? People want to, people want to know all the details of the Lord's coming and the trumpets and the bowls, and when this is going to happen, when that's going to happen. And you know, all the priestly sacrifices with, with the, it's important, but they want to know the little details, like with the doves, and what does the dove mean? What does the wood mean? What does the flower mean? And what is the, you know, how many pieces of wood? And how many doves and lambs and goats, and when? You want to understand that, but the simple things like loving the Lord with all your heart, with your soul, your mind, and all your strength, and to love your neighbor as yourself. You can't, we can't even do that. But we say, oh, that's too simple. I want to know the complicated. I want to know the complicated stuff. But the simple things we can't even do. So how can the Lord reveal more to us? Doesn't mean we don't need to try, right? I don't mean to ignore all that. We should still search the Word, right? The Lord can many times show us more things than that, but sometimes we get too caught up with that. Okay, so getting back to the kingdom. We have to realize that in this universe, there are two kingdoms. There really are just two kingdoms, okay? I talk about Canada, US, and other countries. We call them kingdoms, but really, it's just two kingdoms. Those kingdoms, they all belong to this gray one. They all belong to this one, right? So it's really just two. What are the two kingdoms? The first one is Satan's kingdom, which is the world. That's another name for Satan's kingdom, is just the world. And the world has become Satan's kingdom. 1 John 5:19 says, "The whole world is under the sway of the wicked ones, and it's full of darkness." Everywhere is darkness and evil. Darkness is meaning that there's no God there. There's no knowledge of God. They don't know Him, right? They just live for themselves. They live for, they live for the desires of this king, which is Satan. Whatever Satan wants, that's what they do. And mankind, instead of being in God's image and glory, they became followers of Satan. Right? They may, even if they don't believe in Satan, they're actually following and serving Satan. That's how smart Satan is. He convinced the whole world that he doesn't exist, right? He convinced everybody that he doesn't exist, and they end up serving him, right? Very smart. And he put them into bondage, into a prison, always trying to chase this emptiness, fill this emptiness, fulfilling their sinful desires. They're living in death, in darkness and evil. That's how it constantly is, right? It's just an endless road to nowhere, into the lake of fire. That's what they're doing. And, but the other kingdom is God's kingdom. And in today's, it's expressed in two different ways. There's an earthly kingdom, which is Israel. Then there's a heavenly kingdom. I'm talking about in this age. It's expressed as the church, the heavenly, okay? So God has always been seeking for faithful people for Himself throughout history. And some examples are Noah and Abraham, Moses, Joshua, Samuel, and David. There's several, right? You can read the Bible. You know. Most people don't care for what He wants, but but there are some, a few people that were faithful to Him. And He always used, those are the people that He could use to fulfill His plan, to carry out His plan to raise up a holy nation of people. You know, so, yeah, this is really, and this is what He's looking for, right? So I would say it's kind of like a father who's longing for his children to return to Him. Right? If you look at it from that perspective, He is also hoping and longing for His people, His children, to come back to Him. And He desires, His desire is for all mankind to love Him, to express His glory, to be holy and to be one under Him, like we mentioned, right? To be a kingdom of priests. In Exodus 19, verse 6, 1 Peter 2, we read about this several times. We read it before, that He wants to have a kingdom of priests, or holy, to serve Him. But Satan, what he's always trying to do is to prevent people from returning to God. And he always works to try to frustrate or mess up God's plan. He's always trying to get in the way of God's plan. That's what he's been doing from the beginning. So if that's what Satan is doing, we cannot be ignorant of God's plan. If Satan is working against God's plan, we have to be even more working for God's plan, which means we need to understand what it is. We need to see it, right? Which is that God wants to have His kingdom. You know, today, you can already see, right? In the news, we saw that, what is it, yesterday, right? Israel and Iran, they were attacking each other. Well, not just, Israel was attacking Iran, but a week ago, Iran was attacking Israel. And then, you know, they're always fighting each other. And it's amazing how this little tiny country, you know, Israel, I think if you drive from the top to the bottom, it's like two hours, right? It's such a small country. And it's surrounded by countries that hate them. But somehow, they're still alive. They haven't been destroyed, you know? Iran is so big and powerful, right? It's a huge country. But somehow, they cannot destroy Israel. And Israel is now fighting seven fronts. They're fighting against Hamas and Hezbollah and Lebanon and Syria and Iran and the Houthis and Egypt and Yemen. Like, they're fighting all these different enemies all at once. Somehow, they're still surviving. You know, when Iran, a week ago, or two weeks ago, Iran shot how many? 200 rockets, ballistic missiles at Israel, right? Not one Israeli got killed. But the only person that died was a Palestinian, which is, I'm sure it was a mistake, right? But somehow, God is able to protect this small country. And even if you read the history of how it came to existence, it's really amazing how so many of the Arab countries came together to fight against them, to destroy them. And even till today, people around the world have been rising up. Like, in downtown Toronto, every weekend, we have protests. People violently wanting to wipe out Israel. But somehow, they're still around, you know? So it's really a miracle that they can be like that. And it's a visual, it's a visual sign that you can see that God is faithful to His original promise, going back to Abraham, Isaac, and Jacob, thousands of years ago. God is still keeping His promise till today. You can see it with your own eyes, right? So it's really amazing. So you can see also that God, but that is the earthly kingdom. But the spiritual, the heavenly kingdom, is the church. And this is where Satan is also attacking. But the people, unfortunately, are not even aware. They're so blinded. The people of God in the church are so blinded that they don't even realize that they're under attack. The Israelis in Israel, they know. They're here for the state of Israel, the kingdom, right? They're here to keep Israel going and to fight against the enemies of Israel. They know what they're doing. But somehow, the people in the heavenly kingdom have no idea. They're just going to church Sunday after Sunday, fighting over what doctrine is right and all that. They have no idea. Right? The Jews know, but we don't know. Why is that? Right? We just want blessings. All we want is blessings. But we don't care about what God wants. So... Yeah, and so... Right, so like I was saying, Israel is the first manifestation of the kingdom of God, okay? The kingdom of heaven, right now, is spiritual. But in, but throughout the ages, God has always had a manifestation of the kingdom, meaning that He wants a people. He doesn't, see, this is where it's gone wrong, right? People are always focused on heaven, going to heaven. But if you read the Bible, you can see that God has always tried to have a nation of people that are holy and for Him, that are separated for Him, different from the world. And that's what Israel was supposed to be. And that's, actually, let's go back to read Exodus 19. Okay? This is what Israel was meant to be. 4, starting from verse 4. "You have seen what I did to the Egyptians and how I bore you on eagle's wings myself. Now therefore, if you will indeed obey My voice and keep My covenant, then you shall be a special treasure to Me above all people; for all the earth is Mine. And you shall be to Me a kingdom of priests and a holy nation. These are the words which you shall speak to the children of Israel." Right, so in Exodus 19, what we read here is, "So the Lord separated them." In verse 5, it says, "If you will indeed obey My voice and keep My covenant, then you shall be a special treasure," right? Read this carefully. "You shall be a special treasure." Special means it's unique. It's different from the rest, right? It's special means it's precious. A precious treasure that is above all people. This tells you that the kingdom of God is not just another kingdom, but it's above everything else, right? It's separated and special for God, okay? "And you shall be a kingdom of priests and a holy nation." So this is what Israel was meant to be. And they failed. You know, if you read through the history, you read through the Old Testament. And again, I encourage everybody to carefully read the Bible, okay? Read through all of it, okay? Because otherwise, you will not appreciate this. You know, yesterday, and the young people, Lisa had a very good question, right? He was asking a question from a friend. And the friend said, "Well, if God is..." Well, eventually, we got down to this question, which is, "If God, why couldn't God have just... Why did he even put that tree of knowledge of good and evil in the garden there in the first place? You know, why could he not have just eliminated Satan in the first place? He could have prevented all of this from happening, right? The fall of man." And we're with, that, too, in our thinking, it is, it's the best idea, right? Why, why did you just eliminate Satan right from the beginning yourself? Don't put that other tree, and then everybody will be happy, right? Perfect. But if, but if God did that, the Bible would stop at Genesis 2. And you would not see what God is capable of and who He is and what He could do, right? His long-suffering, His patience, His love, and His power, His, you know, His victory and His, and what people are like who obey Him and follow Him and the faithful, examples of faithfulness, right? You, your Bible would be so thin that God is so rich, but all you would know is, in the beginning, God created the heavens and the earth, and then He created this and that and that. And then He created Adam and Eve, and He put them in a garden with one tree and everything. That's all you would know. You would never know the amazing works of God, right? So I'm actually thankful that He did that because He allowed that to happen because it really shows us what kind of a God He is, right? So it's really, it's really wonderful, I think. So don't complain about it. Don't complain. The Lord in His wisdom allowed it to happen. So, yeah, and they failed. They, God failed. But like I said earlier, He is so faithful that He still kept His promise. And in 1948, the state of Israel was restored. It's back into existence. It was destroyed almost 2,000 years earlier, in the year 70, when the Romans came in to shut down a Jewish revolt and destroy Jerusalem and destroy the temple. And then the Jews were wandering all around. But in 1948, God amazingly restored the nation of Israel. And, but then, the church is the second manifestation of the kingdom. So now, the Jews, the nation of Israel failed as a kingdom of God. But, so now, the perfect, the real manifestation of God is the church. And now, we are part of it. We are the ones that make up this kingdom. So all followers of Christ, all real, I'm not saying, there are a lot of people that call themselves Christian, okay? A lot of people, even, they grew up in a Christian family. They grew up in a so-called Christian country. You ask them, "Are you Christian?" "Yes." "Have you received Jesus?" "What's that?" They don't know. "Have you been born again?" "What's that?" They don't know. "Why are you a Christian?" "Oh, because my parents are Christian." So they call themselves Christian. So I don't call, I don't say "Christians" here. I say followers of Christ, people who really follow Christ and are born again. These are the ones that make up the kingdom of God, the church, okay? Now, we are God's nation. We are the heavenly kingdom of God. And you can see this in Matthew 16, 18 and 19, where Christ, Jesus Christ, He said to Peter, "And I say to you that you are Peter, and on this rock I will build My church, which is My kingdom; and the gates of Hades shall not prevail against it. And I will give you the keys of the kingdom of heaven; and whatever you bind on earth will be bound in heaven; and whatever you loose on earth will be loosed in heaven." Amen. Yeah, and then there's also other verses, like Colossians, what is this one? 1, verse 18. It says, "And He is the head of the body, the church, who is the beginning, the firstborn from the dead, that in all things He may have the preeminence." So He is the head of the church. So the head, the king of the kingdom, in other words, okay? And then Ephesians 1:22 and 23 also mention here that He put all things under His feet and gave Him to be head over all things to the church, "which is His body, the fullness of Him who fills all in all." Amen. The church is the fullness of God. And He is the head over it. Yeah, so today, the church is the manifestation of the kingdom of God. We are the, so the idea that the church is just the place that you go on Sundays is really, it's messed up. It's just a total deception of the enemy. Because you can see how the kingdom, the church, even has the power over the principalities and powers, right? It's the fullness of God. It has the keys of the kingdom of heaven. And the gates of Hades cannot overcome it. That's how powerful it's supposed to be. It's the fullness of Christ on earth. But yet, people have reduced it to just where I go on Sunday. It's really ridiculous, once you see it. So the church is not a kingdom in heaven because people, when they read kingdom of heaven, they think heaven. It's not a kingdom in heaven, but it's a kingdom of heaven on earth. It's a kingdom of heaven, but it's on earth. This invisible kingdom, the kingdom one day will be visible when the Lord comes back. It will be a visible kingdom. But now, this kingdom is invisible. It's spiritual. But it is made visible through the church. The only way that people can see the kingdom is through us, through how we live and how we interact with them. They can't see, it's like they can't see God, but they can see God in you. They can't see Christ, but they can see Christ's life in you. They should be able to. And that's how they can see the kingdom. And that's how they should see the church. Right, so that's why in Matthew, chapter 5, it says here, verse 15, "Nor do they light a lamp and put it under a basket, but on a lampstand..." Oh, sorry, verse 14. "You are a light, the light of the world. A city that is set on a hill cannot be hidden." Remember, we said earlier that the world is in darkness, complete darkness. But the church is supposed to be the light. But the church is supposed to be the light. It's this city that's set on a hill. And in John 17, it talks about how you're of the world, you're, you're in the world, but you're not of the world. And God, and Christ did not take us out of the world so that the world can see and see and taste the kingdom of God, right? Otherwise, He would have taken us out, but He deliberately wants to keep us here so that we can be a light in this world, right? And all these other verses that you can read yourself, right? So, but the main point here is that the kingdom of God has to be made visible through the church. And we'll talk about this a little bit more this evening. And the millennial kingdom, like I said, the thousand-year kingdom, which, when Jesus comes back, He will set up His throne visibly in Jerusalem, the earthly Jerusalem. It will be right, not here, it will be in Israel, for a thousand years. And that is the third manifestation of the kingdom. And that is after Christ returns. And then the final manifestation of the kingdom is the new Jerusalem, the new heaven and new earth, which is for eternity. That's when all of creation is restored, okay? And then, you can see this, we have it right there, but you can see here, the nation of Israel, the manifestations of the kingdom. First, the nation of Israel, then the church, and then the millennial kingdom, and then the new Jerusalem. You know, I, when I realized this, I did not, I've never, I did not see this chart. I, I realized this, that, that this is what God was trying to do. And others who saw the same thing, they made this chart, a very nice diagram. And this is exactly what is happening, right? That God has always wanted to manifest His kingdom on this earth, and He does it. He did it in different ways through the ages. Right, so the kingdom is incredibly important. So we really have to see that.